Let's start all over. All right, let's do all that over.
Okay.
It helps if I turn on the sound.
Okay, you're set?
I'm set.
Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting.
I'll second.
Trustee Lantier?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anybody have any, uh, board member have any disclosures regarding any of the agenda items before us this evening?
I'd like to mention that my wife submitted the historic Pittsburgh applications in front of us, um, so, um, I may recuse myself from that.
All right. You do not? Okay, Renee?
I do not.
Okay, and I do not.
I also had another administrative question before we begin concerning the, this meeting, um, and nothing against trustee Stetser, but my understanding is that, um, this meeting, as it's noticed, will be conducted in person. We have no other local law or resolution in place allowing for hybrid meetings, and so I'm confused about, um, the, how this is allowed to be a meeting where some members are not present.
This, the state, they-
The state extended it.
-have the ability to conduct Zoom meetings locally.
The state extended it.
It would be no different if trustee Stetser had come in this morning and said she had COVID, so she's allowed to participate per Zoom as by the law that was passed, the extension, the executive order that has been continued. So nothing has changed in the last two years with the capability of doing that. The board hasn't made an adoption of any other different policy. There is nothing else in place, so we're following everything by the state.
Yeah, the extension, that, that came out last week, and I think it's extended through, I think for another month.
Yeah, August, like 14th.
Yeah, I think it's just one more month.
They've been extending it month-to-month.
Yeah.
Honestly, I wish they would just extend it for like three months and then let me know.
And I would, if anyone is, um, objects to this, I, I know we have a quorum, this meeting was rescheduled, um, I was planning to be in town for, for the one last week, and we consolidated them, so I wasn't, I was planning to tune in as a participant or as a, as an attendee, I'm sorry, um, so I'm happy if anyone has any objections, I can, can do that, and I cannot be a panelist, um, I'm happy to do that, too, I just, since I had the opportunity to, to tune in, I did.
Well, thank you for that, Renee, but under, um, the governor's order, um, you are allowed to participate remotely as an elected official.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to proceed with reading the guidelines for our meetings, please?
Let me take a deep breath. The public will have opportunities to comment on a specific agenda item when they occur in the meeting, and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must speak, must, speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are seating. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the court will announce how attendees should signal if they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through a raise-your-hand feature which we are using Zoom, so if you're attending virtually, please raise your hand, or you can put your comments in the Q and A, I don't read comments from the chat. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York State law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, only interrupt the speaker during the remarks for the purpose of clarification of information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, humility, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to village clerk@villagepittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for the meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to a three-minute time limit. The printed materials or other media provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record, private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Well, thank you.
No, thank you.
It's, it's a mouthful. Okay, so let's, let's get going here. Um, Steve, is Steve on?
Yes, he is.
Okay, we have the building inspector report, um, we all have received a copy in our packets, and, um, did anybody have any questions for Steve? Yeah, anybody? Renee?
I did not.
Okay. Steve, is there anything you'd like to, to add or share with the, with the board and the group?
Um, no, I mean, everything, you know, we're just chugging along, we got Rob Robertson's going to come in either tomorrow or the next day, we're going to take care of the 5K grant, uh, finalizing the paperwork on that, um, we're looking at adopting the New York State solar permit, unified solar permit, which will put us at the, you know, right at the next level, and once we do the, uh, figure out how many percentage of street lights and, and submit that, then to him, I believe we'll be in line for a $20,000 grant with the point total that we will have at that point, so we're, we're moving forward.
Yeah, and thank you for your work on that, and, um, just so, you know, anybody watching tonight or here in the meeting room, those grants don't have to be matched, they are direct grants, they come right back to our Village Board Sustainable Projects, so it's a really, it's a wonderful thing, so.
What's the grant for?
Pardon me?
What's the grant for?
Well, to be determined, in other words, the money's available, so, for example, we're looking at a new HVAC system, you know, things like that, so, um, looking potentially at geothermal, you know, um, and there's also, um, there's, we have grant money to, to look into that, but also there's additional rebates and funding for geothermal right now, available in New York State, so that's a good thing. Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you. And DPW report.
We lost audio.
Sorry. Must have missed the mic.
Oh, we're there, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to point out the quote that we have from the Village Board for the replacement of the solar grid is up front for $120,000, which is up by $90,000 from two years ago, um, so we're working towards a kind of meeting rather than replacing it, but lining it off the term contract that we just established with SCANS. Hopefully, in all Canada, we'll have more funding.
Yeah, that's kind of an issue for so many municipalities, you know, it's just exponential right now, yeah.
I had a couple of questions, Zach, regarding the opening of the top of the arboretum, uh, you had mentioned that you removed, um, three cubic yards of material approximately, um, was that organic material, inorganic material?
Some organic, I think I specified right, yeah, some organic, um, and other trash, bricks, um, concrete chunks, tires, corrugated metal that we pulled out of the ground, I think there was coal because there was a VCT that was in there.
Okay. Did you have to dig down to find the material, or was that all on the surface?
Yeah, we did do too much surface disturbance, so.
Okay, and the, there was a tire that I saw when I visited inside a while ago, so you removed some, some tires from the site, were those there from the beginning when the site was originally cleared, or were those placed there afterwards?
After, like, we cleared the area out, you know, not to any of the ground.
Okay, that's fine, I just, uh, I took some aerial pictures of it after it was initially cleared, and there were no tires, so I'm just curious where the tires came from. Um, the, and in terms of, um, uh, the ground, was the ground leveled? Did you use a box blade or anything else to clear the ground there?
No.
Okay.
We went through the overs, exposed it, and then wherever was bad enough, we just took the blade of the bucket and kind of backtracked it.
Okay, so you did do some leveling, then?
Yeah.
Okay, great, because I, I know the building inspector mentioned that until the ground is leveled, uh, he recommended that it was closed for public safety, so I just, I guess that's the-
You leveled in some areas, and he determined it was level enough in others, I'm correct. Steve, maybe, maybe you want to add to that? Steve?
Yeah, and, you know, the area is never going to be perfectly level, what we, what the DPW did is tried to make it, uh, safe enough for use for the public, and not have to worry about any of the bigger holes or, or pitfalls.
Thank you.
Okay.
Or else one other topic, but I believe we are two going to present this session.
Yeah. Yeah, who else? Okay, any, anything else? All right, uh, next up, treasurer's report.
Okay, and Brooklyn will be joining us tonight, so I'll be attending for his report.
It's where he's coaching football.
Yes, it is. Is there any questions related to the bill?
I'm good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the clauses presented. Second? Roll call.
Trustee. Lantier?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And, any chance we could do the minutes at the end? I was thinking of that, too, I know, I, I actually put in a move to the end of the meeting, we have eight sets of minutes, so it would be a thing, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, you ready for the court section?
Yep.
Um, Dorothea, um, one quick question about the vouchers that came in from, from June, um, for Zogland, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to do that separately, or was that in the?
That was in.
Okay, yeah, I'm scanning through, I must have the old version, thank you.
Yep, no, there, there was two updates, the final update.
Nope, I got it now.
Okay, we good? Um, I'm presenting to the board from Mango Metzger Bar or County for the A U B processing, I need approval for the quote for $2,750, we need to do that. So if I can approve of the sign that.
So moved. Okay, so moved, is there a second? A second on the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes. The second quote for the village board is from Action Security for panic buttonings, and reviewing the security for the village, we have one panic button in the village hall, which is located at the counter. Great if you're at the counter and there's danger or there's a problem, but it doesn't help if you're in the back or you're in the meeting room, this provides additional locations for people to call someone help.
So would the motion be to authorize Steve to sign this contract, or just have the mayor sign?
We can, you can have the mayor, me, Steve.
Okay, I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Real quick, only update I have for the board from last night's store preservation board meeting, the application for the village board for the project, when the rear entrance did receive its approvals, it will be submitted for shipboat for additional approvals, so we're moving down the road with the process. Okay?
Thank you.
And that's all for you tonight.
Okay, next up would be the minutes, but we are going to move them to the end of the meeting because we have eight sets of minutes, and it's a lot. Um, so why don't we, actually, why don't we go into the non-municipal permits, the turn the town teal?
Correct, we've had this application in front of us every year, we've made adjustments with allowing that they should have someone represented with the DPW to go around with them, the trees, to make sure they're conducted safely, putting on the ribbons, and it's for the month.
And I will make that motion that we approve, and then have they met the 45-day?
They're putting them in September, I believe.
Yeah.
There's plenty of time, there's an additional waiver, we've, we don't require insurance for them for the ribbons.
Yeah.
The ribbons on the-
Okay, and it's the same as last year?
It's exactly the same.
Okay. So- Under the same guidelines as previously approved, um, including the insurance waiver, that can be received within 45 days before the event, at least 45 days.
No, they don't need to produce-
We don't need it.
No insurance from them, because they're just putting the ribbons up.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, not a requirement. Thank you, so I've got the motion, I have two motions. We have a motion from Lily, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I'm going to guess there's no one here for the duck drop, so that's me, too, um, this is an event, I think this is, it's been-
It says September.
September as well, um, I think they did proceed last year, so this is the same criteria as we've done in many years with them.
Yeah, and I also, I, I also have an agenda item underneath Pittsburgh Youth Services, um, I do want to just bring this back to the board, I guess in years past, a while ago, um, the, the village used to, uh, make a donation to Pittsburgh Youth Services, and I, evidently that has been, um, hasn't been happening, and I did, um, meet with, um, the directors from Pittsburgh Youth Services, and they sort of reminded us that they used to receive a donation from our village, and they provide a wonderful service to our community, um, and I do know that the school certainly gives them funding, as does the town, gives them a significant donation, and I think it would be really great if this board would approve $1,000 towards, uh, Pittsburgh Youth Services, and we could certainly be listed as a sponsor for the duck drop as well, um, I think it's a good thing, and also, uh, just for the record, the, the mental health issues in our community have risen significantly since COVID, so I think this is a good thing, and I, I would like us to show our support. I will second the motion if that is indeed a motion. It sounded like a motion.
Yeah, I think that's a motion.
Um, do, do we need any legal vetting for this, because we're giving a, a gift to a, a private organization, even though it's a nonprofit, I, I just wanted to confirm the, that's not going to cause any issues?
Um, according to our attorney, it isn't, and we've, we've done this in the past as well, and other municipalities, it's also fun, so.
You could, you could make an argument that if Pittsburgh Youth Services provides a service for village residents, and that would justify a contribution to the-
Yep, that's what our attorney said, so I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a second? Did we get a second?
Yes, Lily seconded me.
I made the motion, that's right, I usually don't make them, you're right, so you second, okay, so roll call.
We can deal with the donation first, and then we'll go back.
Yeah, then let's go back, because I just want to put that all in.
All right, trustee Lantier?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay, and back to the duck drop?
After the duck drop.
Since you're going to sponsor it, I think you want to give authorization.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the permit as presented, they, it's the same as last year.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for this year's duck drop as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lantier?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And our third non-municipal is historic Pittsburgh for the QR codes, and I believe they have a representative here tonight.
Or they did?
Maybe not, I, I will recuse myself, since my wife made the appointment.
Well, this, this is similar to what they did, uh-
Yeah, as last year.
Yeah. I thought that was great.
I, oh, they weren't here, um, well, in their absence, yes, I represent every community here in the village, historic Pittsburgh's looking for-
Dorothea, oh, look.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't know if, um, there's a hand raised in the attendees, maybe, maybe one of them is, is presenting it.
Thank you.
Mr. Beris, you can speak.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening, you guys. Um, yes, we, um, we conducted this, um, event last year, I'm not sure what our term is going to be, is it through October, Dorothea, I think that's-
It's through November 15th.
November 15th, okay.
August 15th.
Uh, it was very well received last year, and we'd like to do it again for the benefit of the community.
It's great. Any other-
By the way, this is from Margaret Caraberas, 81 South Main Street.
Thank you, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the permit as presented, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Justin, you can come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay, um, why don't we go back up to the bit award for Rand Creek, um, this is the, I'm sorry, not on the document yet, uh, this is Craig Prince, he, he provided me additional information that was requested by the board. Zach, did you want to add anything to this, or, you know?
I have the other things in that quote that I was asking.
I have a question I had asked in the past, and I'm, sorry, I can't remember what the answer, and that was regarding, and there's a reason I'm asking it, regarding the infrastructure or utilities that you indicated were running parallel to the creek, is that, is that what you indicated?
Underneath.
Under the creek, which is a very odd place for them to be, okay, so they will verify that before any work proceeds, I see, okay, because when I, as I was looking for the, at the guidelines for ARPA funds, it was clear that there has to be a compelling case to be made for those funds, public funds being used, and I thought that, that the utilities were next to the creek.
There are, um, I think there's a gas line, a water main, and a sewer ladder, that is one of the, have you had a stakeout yet? Yes, so there's probably so three.
So it's the trifecta.
Unless someone removed them, yes.
Yeah, so. Okay, so they're all there. And, and this, this particular company has done work in the village before.
Mason Fretsch has.
Yeah, so they're, you know, familiar with-
Yep.
And part of the job description, they said they would indicate where the utilities.
Yes, before they start digging.
So we want documentation to give, okay, okay, I feel better.
They will call another stakeout before they start digging, because they're all utilities. Craig Prince is the best site contractor we will find anywhere.
That is great, that's great. Absolutely, okay, so we, we have the, um, additional information in this contract presented to the board, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. So moved, second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Leiken?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, you'll get back to Craig, okay, thank you, thanks so much, Zach, okay, appreciate it, all right, next up, Friends of the Arboretum.
I don't drop anything.
How you doing?
Good, thank you, well. There will not be a text at the end. You're welcome. Thank you. Well, thank you for having us this evening, I'd just like to let you know this, we really appreciate it, since you just contacted Dorothea over the weekend, and you got the message on Monday, so we really appreciate that.
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Right, right, Frank, Frank Kaphamis, 56 Heatherer Stride in the village. Normally I have to spell my last name, but I did, she does it.
Not at all.
Okay, I'm going to do a couple of things this evening, one, we want to thank people who's been through so far, we want to give the board an update on what we have been doing up until now, and then have some requests to help us move forward, so it's organized in that way, first, a thank you, we sent a thank you email with one of the steering committee for the Friends, which is Sue Julian, June Reeves, and Ralph Corby, one of the in extending the thanks to the village board trustees for the recent arboretum remedial work conducted by the DPW, and a special thanks, because this is really helpful to us, for opening the arboretum meadow area for volunteer and public access, and we've already done some volunteer work in that area, which we'll talk about in a minute. Also, I'm going to extend the thanks to the village for Dorothea for providing us with a draft copy of the May 12, 2022 minutes, because we wanted to make sure whatever we do is consistent with what are in the minutes, so that was helpful to us, so thank you. On to the Friends actions, we're happy to, we say to you that our membership has increased from nine to 52 members, or, no, it's 53 now, so we're very excited about that, because we can use people for various functions that were, has an action of proposing, and we'll talk a little bit more on those actions. Number two and three under actions are descriptions of some of the weeding that we have done, our weeding, first weeding we've done was, uh, June 6th, and the main weeding was around native shrews and trees that were planted in the arboretum in 2021. Then on the 15th, we did additional weeding and some labeling of trees, and, uh, that was at the time we were able to get into the meadow and found this nasty tree, and I can't pronounce the name of it, but Sue, who's a master gardener, knows how to pronounce the name, and she can identify it, and she can talk about why it's so important to remove those trees as soon as possible, which we hope to remove all of them, could you talk about that just a little bit?
Sure.
And pronounce the name of it?
Sue Julian, 56 Monroe, um, they're Atlantis trees, and they're extremely invasive, um, there's a lot of information about it, but, um, the root system is just ridiculous, and we pulled out, when we were up there, really small, just really tiny tree, the roots were this long, I mean, they're just, and, in addition to them being very invasive, which we all know that, uh, the gypsy moths are attracted to them, and they're a host for gypsy moths, which are coming our way, um, I was at Longwood Gardens last year on a trip, and they went everywhere, in Pennsylvania, they're coming this way, and they're coming quickly, so it's important to-
Gypsy moth or spotted lanterns?
I'm sorry, spotted lanterns, yes, they're both coming, but, yeah, so it's important to get them out of there, yeah, and it's not going to be an easy job, though, because just cutting them down doesn't do it, you can cut it down, and you can go back, you know, that could go back 10, 12 feet a year, and-
Yeah, the energy goes to the root, the rhizome underneath, yeah. Thank you.
Nice to have an expert helping us, I'm out there pulling weeds, and I kept hearing tell them, no, don't pull that, that's a good tree, pull that one, so it's really, really nice to have an expert. Talked about two and three, and our next weeding party is already scheduled for July 25th, and I did do a gerridge, I already contacted Dorothea to let her know, because I was, I was a little repressed in the last time, and, uh, I will try not to be repressed again, be on the schedule. Uh, number four, and this is something we're very excited about, we have established an educational outreach committee, and you can kind of read the details there, we have five members of that, who are six now, we have six members, and the chair is Rob, and then Jennifer McCarty, who lives right next door to us, so we have a little influence on her joining us, and then Sean McBride, Paula Sherwood, Margot Foss, and Jim Wick, okay, all members of Friends. And the charge of this committee is to establish relationships with the Friends and schools, including this Pittsburgh Schools and Nazareth College, and with Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, who are to assist in providing arboretum educational projects and activities, um, and we have a list of some potential projects there, which, ant boxes, bird boxes, trail signage, benches, trail extensions, um, the contact, Rob has made a contact with the Boy Scout Troop 167 to discuss potential Eagle Scout projects, and I know he's coming up on that this Wednesday, now, when such projects are proposed or identified, the scouts will be required to request- request that they come to the Board of Trustees and make a presentation for approval.
Yeah, they've done so in the past.
Right, consistently.
Yeah, it's fun, yep. It's great.
It's one to be sure that we follow protocol now. Okay. The next, and Jim Wick, who's on our outreach committee, is also agreed to be our treasurer, so we're very fortunate. A lot of knowledge he has, and he's coming up right now and exploring obtaining a tax exemption for Friends. It's kind of a complex process, but he seems to have the knowledge to do it. Do you want to say anything where you're at on that? Or?
I'll start, starting basically trying to figure out where the cart is and where the horse is.
Okay, the next thing we have, here are two different Arboretum signs, Arboretum signs, that have been developed, and I'll show them to you. One, they're pretty similar, as you'll see. These are signs that we're hoping to put up in five locations at the Arboretum, which we will talk about in the next section about our requests, just identify the Arboretum. But meant to be temporary until we can get permanent signage. This is a sign that we developed so that when we're working in the Arboretum and we put these up, people will know, oh, who are they, and maybe they'll come and observe what we're doing and ask questions, and maybe decide to join in at some point. So those are the two signs. Okay, the last thing I have under actions, and it looks very fortunate, Tom Santa, who is the owner, many of you know what I know, for Garden Center, he has, he became a member of Friends and he's agreed to advise us, and help us, and help speak to the Board of Trustees when we're making footfalls, when we're trying to make decisions about the best way to, best activities and how to do them. So that sums up the actions today that we're sharing with you. Now, we have a few requests, which are written out pretty clearly. Dorothy, as I said, already has given us the draft of 2022 minutes, May 12. And I know you're probably going to approve that tonight, so we'd like to get a copy of the final minutes when they're approved, in the same presence of this meeting. So when they're approved, if you could just send a copy to me and both Friends, that would be great.
Sure.
We also like number two, permission to place a lot of the signs identifying the Robert Corby Museum, Arboretum, locations at the entrance, and we have a map, and which I'm very bad at, give you a copy and try to explain the locations.
He's going to want to see that too. But he's, oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Robert, June, can one of you, because I'm not as good.
Frank and I actually walked the Arboretum, and we picked locations where the signs would be out of the way, not cause safety issues, but be visible at the primary entrances into the Arboretum. So sign one, when you get to the end of Grove Street, there's where the Village Lane turns, there's a sign that marks Village Lane, we'd like to put this kind of at the base of that next to where the Village Lane sign is. Sign two, which is where right now, there's actually a temporary sign directing people to the one of the trail entrances that goes through the plant, or the eschus plantation, we would put that right on the right side of that trail entrance. Sign three would be the location where the trail goes into the Arboretum off of Frog Trail, which goes between the Arboretum and the Erie Canal Nature Park. Sign four would be between the entrance of, the intersection of Frog Trail with the Auburn Line Trail, and also close to where the hillside trail leaves there, so you could catch two of them with that sign there. And then sign five, we would put, assuming that the proposed trail extension that would address the safety issue where the gate is currently closed, would be at the entrance to that trail where it intersects Village Lane.
Thank you. Do you have any questions about?
Actually, I think, you know, our, Steve Loth is online, but he doesn't have a copy of this, and I think it's something that he would want to see too.
Okay.
You know, I think that's just appropriate, you know, because he's been overseeing all of this as well. So, you know, we'd like to have him take a look at it.
And Rob, your steering committee, if it's appropriate, I'm sure we'd be happy to meet him.
Yeah, sure.
And show exactly the locations, so he may be even more comfortable with that approach, that we would agree, just contact me and I'll.
Yeah, I mean, a temporary size, but just, I think, just as a matter of course, I think it'd be appropriate.
Great, all right, so we'll hear from you or.
No, you'll hear from him. Yeah, you'll hear from him.
To do that.
Yep.
So we could agree tonight that Steve will meet us in the Arboretum and then we can.
Yeah, yeah, I think just to follow up.
Because the signs are temporary, I don't.
Yeah, they're temporary, but just to stop the eyes across the.
Should the, should the board then approve the placement of the signs contingent on Steve's review?
Based on what, Steve?
Zach, do you have any thoughts on the sign placement? Because I know, you know, you're all in and out of there.
The only one that I would have a question about the sign, right?
Yeah, that's.
Kind of established trail.
Yeah, yeah. And Steve may want to.
Everything else is rolling up out of the Arboretum, and I think it's a good indication of the road.
Sure, yeah. And they're nice signs.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the placement of the signs, in all or in part, based on Steve's review, Steve's final review.
So are these permanent?
No, these are temporary signs.
Can you just pull it up? You missed the right, not the right, yeah, they're just temporary signs, but it's just, you know, so Steve, Steve. Yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Plummer, Steve has the same reason.
Oh, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, if, I'm, I'm kind of unsure of the process here because of the signs and all that, but, I mean, if Frank wants to give me a yell tomorrow, I can, you know, we can meet and I can look at it and go from there.
Yep, that's what we were talking about, so this, it all, it all.
Do you want to set a time now, Steve?
Can you do it offline?
Oh, sure.
Usually after the meeting, you know, we're trying to kind of move the business a little forward, but, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion.
Best way to contact Steve?
Just call the office. Call the office.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a sec, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Oh, we have a quick question.
How temporary are these signs? Is it just while you guys are doing the work, or is it until?
Oh, no, these are to be there until, there's two kinds of signs. One will be there when we're doing the work, which is this other sign. These will remain there until hopefully, if we make progress, we can get permanent signage and such. Now, if there's a problem at any time, obviously, they can be moved.
Yeah, pre-see, you know, people walk through their old time stuff, they'll end up missing if I see something, just now.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, there's sometimes.
They're easy to move.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
A second, did they?
Okay, so.
Trustee Laitit?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye, and Steve, it looks like Steve has his hand up as well, just in case, if we need to do any more discussing before we finish the vote.
Yeah, I would, I, I would like to look at the locations before you approve where they are.
This is subject to your.
It's subject to your approval. The motion is subject to you meeting with some of the representatives of the Friends of the Arboretum here tomorrow, if you can, or, you know, you folks will set up a time, they're going to call the office, and then you're going to have the ability to work with them and review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're in the middle of roll call, where are we?
Trustee Laitit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you, this is very helpful. We are requesting, I'm not sure that you can do this now, but we're asking for an update on the status of the Arboretum Wildlife Sanctuary Boundary Survey. I don't know if you can do that.
Yeah, I have a call to Scott Harder about that, because I know there's some pieces of information that are still missing, that he's really trying to track down, so we don't have, it is not a completed survey.
So it's still in process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We would like to discuss, we're not sure, I know money has been donated for the Arboretum through the village, and we're asking, one question is, how much money is there, and how much has been donated to the village, and then we'd like to start at some point discussing how we might use that money.
There's total $400 that's been donated.
$400?
And then we have a line item in our budget as well.
Yes, a line item in the village budget of $4,000.
For the Arboretum?
Yes. Yeah, we put that in our budget.
It's actually $6,000.
Oh, it is $6,000, actually, you're right.
It's to cover the survey as well.
Yes, because it covered the survey, you're right.
$6,000 is to cover the survey, and then whatever's left can be used for the Arboretum, then?
I think so.
Was that, survey came over?
Survey was.
No, it was six, six is sticking in my mind now that you said that. It is four?
It's $4,000.
Well, that's still good, okay.
It was adopted, the survey was being covered by other villages.
Oh, that's right.
Increase to six, maybe, third block.
We'll double, we'll double back in time, it's either four or six.
Okay.
But we have money set aside in our budget.
And the survey is separate from that, or?
Yes.
The survey is, whether it's four or six, the survey is separate.
Right, the survey was.
What's the best way then for the Friends to start working with the trustees and discussing use of that money?
Well, I think what we're going to have to do is, you know, based on where this, how the survey comes out, and Zach, maybe you can speak to this as well, you know, we talked about the fact that we are going to need to have some kind of, you know, a landscape design, site plan, you know, all of these things. We also have to factor in the needs for our DPW and the size of their yard as well.
Okay.
So those are sort of the bigger components that would be probably next up. Is Zach, am I missing anything? That's kind of where we're going with it, right? Yeah, so, so probably some of that money would go towards that.
Let me ask the steering committee, do you see that we might come up with anything before the survey is completed, that within, where we know the Arboretum is, that we might ask for funds?
Excuse me, Frank?
Could we wait?
Can I just interrupt, because we have a lot of items to cover, so if you guys can maybe, you know, work things out and then come back to us, I think, you know, we can all work together on this.
So we can make some requests?
Of course, of course, absolutely.
All right, so we can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I understand.
Yeah.
All right. There's a certain piece I have to respect, I'm not a contact person. So, but thank you. All right, the last thing, our request for the ARPA funds, and June, I'm going to share that with that.
Yes.
There's a, if you turn over a page like Dave, there's kind of rationale for asking for these funds, and June's going to be discussing that, and she's 56 Heatherhurst Drive as well.
Hi, I'm June Reeves, 56 Heatherhurst, as Ron said. If you'll just bear with me, and I'm really reading this, I think it would be more efficient if I just read it. What we are asking to be considered for use of some of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we're going to be receiving. In accordance with the original Village Board approved vision, the transformation of the Arboretum possibly will be leveraged as an educational tool, teaching all ages about invasive plant management, disturbed landscape restoration, and the dynamics of our local native ecosystem and the plants and animals it is composed of. The Arboretum project will also greatly enhance an area of open space that has been used and cherished by village residents and others for many decades. The Arboretum serves as both a buffer and a scenic system ecosystem with the adjacent town of Pittsford Erie Canal Preserve. The steering committee of Friends has reviewed the guidelines for the expenditure of ARPA funding. We believe the Arboretum is an eligible and appropriate use of funding for the following reasons. Number one, it represents an investment in long-term infrastructure for the village. Number two, by enhancing the village's largest park, the money will be used to respond to the far-reaching public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic. The pandemic has underscored the importance of having access to open green space for physical health and emotional well-being. The use of ARPA funds in support of the Arboretum is equitable, because the development of the Arboretum benefits all village residents and enhances the quality of life for all. Number four, the Arboretum project represents the realization of the goal stated in the village's award-winning comprehensive plan. Number five, the current village budget includes limited funding for physical improvements at the Arboretum, although any funding is very much appreciated. Allocating ARPA funding will allow progress to continue, including the original version of annually and incrementally removing the invasive trees and planting native tree shrubs and pollinator member gardens. I would want to just mention, speaking of the invasive trees, that one of the things that Tom Santa discussed with us when he met with us on the Arboretum the past week, were the Alanthus trees that are growing rampant, they're in the Arboretum, and how they might be able to mediate the growth, and it's going to be a very expensive project, because some of those trees are 20 and 40 feet high now. So on behalf of the 53 members and all of the other village residents who use and cherish the Arboretum, Friends would request that the Village Board give serious consideration for allowing some of the ARPA village funding to support the Arboretum. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
I would like to just make a brief comment. I very much appreciate the support and enthusiasm that the community has shown to support this public park. It's really great, we're very privileged to live in a place where citizens are so committed to taking care of our public spaces. I also very much like the idea, and this is going into the separate agenda I do about the ARPA, but my thought on this is that this is something that's strongly supported by the comprehensive plan. It's obviously something that the community is still very invested in to support and promote the development of the Arboretum as originally intended. And I think that it's also a very strong candidate for the use of funds, as it's, this is essentially one-shot revenue, and we should be using that to promote new projects in the village, rather than regular recurring expenses. And so I think that for all those reasons, we still need to look at other options and other, especially community promoted ideas for the use of ARPA funds, but I think this is a great one, thank you.
Well put, thank you. Okay. I think it's all, all sounds great, you know, I do, and I think of everyone here, we've all said from the get-go, we support having this wonderful public land put to use for the public, I mean, that's the goal for everybody, and that's been identified for years past, so we need to get the survey, we need to put other stuffs in place, but obviously, we're going to take everything under consideration, that's what we do. So thank you very much. And someone call Steve, you know, tomorrow, just to set up that meeting, so you can sort it out with the signs and stuff, okay? Yeah, Zach?
Just curious what you guys are doing with that, what you're pulling out? Just curious what you guys are doing.
Yeah, how are you disposing of the invasive plants that you're pulling out? What do you, how are you disposing of those?
We just put them in a big pile.
Okay.
We didn't carry them out.
All right, if, if you guys will let me know, let me know how created, and we can get that.
Okay.
Sort it out for you. Also as well, we, I think we still have some cardboard that's set up back there, if you would like to take that and put it around the base of the trees.
Oh, that'd be great if you had a light to use. That's really helpful.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, the DPW's actually been implementing a weed suppression program throughout the village of cardboard and mulch and, you know, all that, so, excuse me, one second, just going to finish, give me one second. And so, it's great, because they're working with a lot of the businesses that have a lot of cardboard, particularly like Towpath Bike, they get the big boxes, so we can just keep collecting and make sure that it's available as needed, okay? Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I want to get some back there for you guys, I don't know how I can ever be back there, but I think there's some back there right now. Just let me know when you go back, and I'll get some.
Okay, okay, yep, yep.
Make one point about, expand on what June said about Tom Santa's comments about the Alanthus trees. Along the bank, now, the town is going to do a wetland enhancement strategy that they worked out with Andy Smith from Stanton. Along the bank, part of that wetland is in, actually, in the Arboretum. That bank is probably the worst infestation of Arboretum in the whole, on the whole property. What Tom was suggesting is that it might be worthwhile just contracting with a tree removal service for like a day or two, to just pull them all out and get rid of them. And that would, you know, it would be, you know, several thousand dollars to do that, but it would, in one swoop, it would remove what right now is a spreading menace that is a problem.
Did he have any recommendations for treating any of the root systems out?
Yeah.
Well, the correct, the recommendation, and I've talked to a variety of people.
Well, the, the correct recommendation, and I've talked to a variety of people, and even the gentleman at the Sonic Park Zoo Society recommended this as well, is apply herbicide to the stem. Very limited area, kills the stem, and you don't have the problem with, you know, other.
And one thing that's unique about that, because I've participated in alamis removal, it will seal up within five minutes. So you cut the tree and you have to, you have to apply it right then and there.
That's right.
So it's, it's quite labor-intensive, but it's really kind of the only way to do it, to be honest with you.
Same, same thing with not leaving.
So are any, like, drubbing is not going to help?
Tell me again.
Drubbing, moving, actually root systems versus?
It is, it is in this case because they're big enough. You know, if they're small enough, you can mow them eventually. That's what we're doing. Right, which is a great strategy. These are big enough to like that.
So they can be treated.
I'm familiar with that.
Yeah. Good conversation. We're all on it. We all want to move it forward. Yes, Lily?
Thank you. I have one question. Zach, are these the same trees that are proliferating underneath the bridge?
Yes.
Is that the north, where am I? The State Street Bridge? Along that whole stretch along there?
You can see them right next door.
Yeah, right behind the bar.
They're, you know.
Is that in Canal Corrs?
It's, it's Calcor property, but they don't do much for me. So we get there and do as much as we can.
Yeah. It's, it's, they're absolutely just disastrous, really. Yes, a few more comments and then we're going to move on.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to see if we could ask other questions.
The survey, everything hinges on the survey, if we have a plan and so forth. I know that was a few, four months ago. So can that be followed up and reported back next week?
I think, I think you maybe didn't hear what I said. I have a call into Scott Harder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been four months. It hasn't even been commissioned yet.
Well, he's been working on a lot of projects. He's not just doing surveys. So I'm following up with him and hopefully he'll be wrapping it up. I know there's just a few outstanding specifics.
He's got to do a survey. It would be a survey option.
No, he was doing.
He was doing the survey and working with other people as well.
Depending on him doing it, he's got to point us to the surveyor to do the survey.
He's going to do the survey.
He is his survey.
He himself does?
Yes.
He's got like 75%.
Yeah. He's pretty far along.
He's a surveyor. Is he a licensed surveyor? That and can't say.
Yes.
If you want a survey, you have to.
Yes, he is. Yes, because he's done surveys. Yes. Yes. We're going to move on, we're going to move on at this point. I appreciate your thoughts. I have a call into Scott. He's done surveys before. He's been doing research. He's, he's located monuments that no one has seen in literally more than 50 years, which has helped to find the property. I mean, he's, he's chasing it down. It's a real mystery. Because, understand, this property has never been surveyed in this way, ever. So he's creating it from a lot of different components. Because there's a lot of different budding neighbors, neighbors who change, somebody who maybe swap property.
We get surveys usable for grants or other purposes. Do we get what we need?
That's, that's exactly why we're doing this. So appreciate, appreciate the comment. Okay, we're going to move on.
Can we just check to see if there are any other comments online? Is there a public interest?
She would, I think she would have given that.
There's some.
Yeah, I hope we're good. No, thanks for asking. Oh, oop, not quite 7:30 yet. Okay, well, ARPA funds.
ARPA, yes, I included, we're going to be receiving our second installment of ARPA funds. I included the notice from the state, which we're going to have to, I don't have the figure right in front of me. Probably have been in the deck of like 137,000.
Yeah, definitely.
Yep. But I would say, although, and as we're looking at these projects, so one project that the board approved tonight, the Rain Creek project, that is a great use of ARPA funds. So if we can have the board approve those use of those funds, so we can have that set to pay the contractor when that's done, if everybody's in agreement, because that's the intent. So we would approve, approve the use of ARPA funds and expand the budget for the use, how can I, for that one? Expand the budget for the use of ARPA funds for the total.
Right. It's 137,000 plus, a little something. And we're looking at, what was the dollar amount of contract? 18.5. We're looking at the 18.5 for this particular contract. So you're looking for approval from the board?
Yes, so I can make that, we can make that contract directly.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of the funds. So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Trustee Lanthea?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgev?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think the board's going to continue soliciting ideas for the rest of the use of the funds.
Yeah, we talked about maybe doing some type of a workshop, you know, where we can get an input for people and from people and, you know.
I would really like a specific.
Yeah.
Maybe, if not a meeting, but certainly a targeted.
Mm-hmm.
Time frame. Date and, and to get, to get the word out to villagers so that we have public input.
Yeah, I think that's what we were all talking.
Yes, absolutely.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, the next board meeting is August 11th. So I'm not sure if you want to dedicate a workshop prior or during, which, what are you looking for?
What is the timeline on the, on the use of the funds? Do we have like a 12 years, four years?
Yeah.
We have a little bit of time.
Seven years. Yeah.
I might suggest that we wait until summer is over in September and people are back.
Four people.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. I think, I think that would, that's appropriate.
Why don't we look at the September meeting days and perhaps?
I can book those dates out to the board.
Why don't we do it like our second meeting in September, only because people are getting back, kids are going to school, you know? I'm thinking we would get a better turnout, perhaps.
Mayor Plummer?
Yes.
At one of those, a, a, a few meetings back, we discussed putting an online survey capability out so that people could just submit very easily online and put it in a form to us and that we could use it during that workshop. So we'll want to plan ahead for that.
Yeah, and you know, the town did that. And I, I'll reach out to Bill because they, they put that in effect, and that was pretty great. They really had a good response. So I'll make that my action item, Renee. Okay?
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one. Thanks for the reminder on that.
Just, just to be clear on that, can we go ahead and just publish that survey? So we've got plenty of time for people to provide.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm going to call up Bill, I'll float it by the board so you guys all see it, and we can kind of get it up and running. I think it'd be great.
Yeah.
You know, people are out of town. So we still, we want to make sure that we have a large enough window, I think, for that survey too, you know?
Right. Given your second meeting is September, September 15th, you don't have no trust making.
Okay, you'll circuit, you'll pull the board with that. Okay, that'd be great.
And after 20 surveys that's made, audio and visual.
Thank you. Wonderful. Anything else that you wanted to share about that? We're pretty set.
Yeah, we're getting long and I appreciate you for making the motion to cover the main project.
Okay, great. Oh, it's now 7:30. Okay, so why don't we move to the racism proclamation? Do we have the latest draft? Have there were a few amendments you guys?
I sent out the latest draft, and then another email came in with an additional change after I made changes.
They were all great edits. I think it really tightened it up. I'm not sure I'm looking at the most recent one.
Dorothea, the latest one came from me, and it was just, I wasn't necessarily suggesting that edit that everyone said, "Great edit." I was just wondering, wanted to know what everyone's thoughts were. So I'm happy to, to leave it the way it was. I was just suggesting taking that little sentence out entirely, since we already covered it with the edit that Trustee Lightgev made at the end about striving to be an equitable place for all.
No, I think it tightened it up, don't you?
Yeah, I agree with you, Renee, as well, as far as taking that out. I, I think your last email is, is fine with me if you still want to pursue that direction.
So, so we could entertain a motion then to accept the proclamation. Thanks, everybody. Have a great evening. Thanks so much. Okay. So we could entertain a motion to accept it with all of the edits as submitted by board members.
Right. This, and the only one that's necessary is the last one.
Is the last one from Renee, which we all, I agree to that as well. I think that tightens everything up, and I think it's, it's clear too. It clarifies it. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so.
And before we vote, can, just for the public.
Renee speaking. Give me one second.
Sorry. Just for edification, the reason we are updating this is, or can you give the reason for it for those attending?
Request by trustee Keating, I believe a couple of meetings ago, to bring it current to the current board. Because we have the previous version on display, and you want the current board to reaffirm it, is my understanding.
Yeah, I, I think that's nice.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Dan couldn't be at the meeting tonight. And, and, yes, Dave?
My question is simply, can you just read the sentence or whatever? Is that edited from the back?
Um, the last, the sentence that's being removed is in the first paragraph, is not who we strive to be. Is that right?
There were other changes as well.
Right, and those are posted.
Those are posted.
Those are posted, right.
Yeah.
Yep, I posted them this afternoon.
She's been posting away.
It's, it's in the updated pack.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just the removal of a sentence. Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as amended by the trustees.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Renee. Roll call?
Trustee Lanthea?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgev?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
And if I can, once I get this finalized and being pretty, everybody can stop by and sign it and we'll put it on the board.
Thank you. That's, that's great. Yeah. And thanks, everybody, for your, for your work on that too. That's just great. Okay, so it is 7:31. We have a short-term retail permit for the Buffalo Bills. As we all know, the Buffalo Bills are running a training camp starting, actually, next week? Weekend, I know. It's coming up.
It is next week.
It is next week. I know, I'm sort of missing parts of July. And this is the shuttle service that they provide, you know, to, to, I guess, St. John Fisher and back. And we have the short-term retail permit application before us. Are there any questions about this? Okay, I'll entertain.
May I just clarify something first? This is something that has generally been reviewed by the, the zoning board appeals, is it? Not planning board. They usually review this as a, a temporary use permit, and they felt that since the code has been updated, they do not have the ability to do that based on the code. We did have a meeting a while ago where this board decided to, we did vote, Jeff. I don't know if you've seen that meeting, but we did vote to make some changes to clarify the code because we do feel that's something that the planning board should be able to handle. But this is to ensure that the, this is that we all agree that we're able to proceed.
Yeah, thanks for clarification. Yes, Jeff?
It has nothing to do with this, but there were changes voted on, was that on the call?
We, we did vote to have you help to draft something that would clarify the code to make sure it stays within the jurisdiction of the, the planning board.
I remember that.
I know, I thought maybe you weren't looked in. I don't think you were there when we did vote on that, so I wanted to make sure that you were part of the process.
Okay.
Okay.
I can, I can talk to you.
Yeah, we can, we'll follow up with you, Jeff. Yeah.
Well, all you need to tell me is you want changes.
Yeah.
We'd like to clarify it so that the, the planning board.
So it's clear to them.
I've also got a document from Justice Police, which might be helpful in terms of outlining a specific part, so I can forward that to you as well.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think he may have forwarded that to us already, but we can, we can double check. Okay. So I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Good.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, back to seconds. Wow.
You got you.
From hither and yon. Okay.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgev?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there anybody wishing to speak? Is there anybody online?
Everyone, there's people online and no cameras.
We're saying crickets. Well, we all love the Bills.
Oh, hand just to him.
Oh, hand came up.
Okay, let me, okay. Okay, you're allowed to speak.
Hey, thanks, guys. Sorry, I, is, this is public comment, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
All right, perfect. Dave McGill, 28, Washington Ave. Is that, that's all the info, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I have a, a request and slash suggestion. I think you guys do a great job during the meetings and with the packets and the agendas and everything. The trouble I see is the communication outside of that to residents. I'll give you an example.
Excuse me one, excuse me one second. I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but this is a public hearing where you speak to the agended item that's before us. And this is the short-term retail permit to.
Oh, shit, I'm sorry. The, the comments are later on, right? The overall public.
Yeah, we're happy to have your comments. It's just that we are now in a public hearing over a specific agended item.
Yeah, my mistake. I'll wait till, I'll wait till the end. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Okay. Again, there's no.
Okay, okay. All righty. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Lanthea?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgev?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, this is back to the board. Are there any additional questions? Or I'll entertain a motion to approve the short-term retail permit for the Buffalo Bills event.
I'll make a motion to the short-term retail permit for the Buffalo Bills event.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgev?
Aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's see. Next up, oh, just rescheduling of the code update meeting. We were going to have just like a little, you know, workshop. And I know Steve has a list of sort of, you know, the easy stuff. Some of us eating typos and just cross-references that don't match up. But we, you know, we do all need to kind of sit down and go through some stuff here.
Yes, we do. Because I'm wondering if, if I have the same thought that I had regarding the ARPA funds. And that is to wait until September until the summer is, you know, past and everybody's activities are, and we're getting our head back in the game. That's what I think. So is it possible? You know, I mean, we have to be realistic. Yeah, I think there's some, there, there might be a little bit of discussion regarding some of the items, and I think we.
Great, okay.
That's why I was just reposting it because we had the meeting and then we canceled. Let me see.
Yeah, so we're just bringing it back to the board. So, okay, so we'll, we'll look at September. We'll come up with some dates for that. Okay, so, oh, next up.
Can I ask?
Yes.
So is the change to the temporary use permit going to await all of the code changes? Or are we doing that?
I don't think we should just put it in. Don't you, with, you know, for a workshop, because it's just a few.
Let's, Jeff, I can resend that email that Justin sent to me, and then maybe you can give, give us your thoughts on how expensive that might be.
It's, it's her, you know, doing the code, to code publishers and all that stuff.
Right, right. We may batch it. I, I think it probably makes sense to batch it to not be.
Good use of the word, batch it.
Let me see if I can state this right. What I do is I submit all our reports for laws, owns of year, so they're codified all at one time. We can pass them as we go, but we codify all at one time. So just to save the printing costs and everything.
There's a lot involved every time.
It's a lot cheaper this way. So that's why you see batches, like you're going to see a bill, you're going to see a quote coming for 2021, 2022, because I just threw everything in. I figured get it all at one time. So it's cheaper.
But we have ordered to direct you to, to look at, look at that. So, I mean, we.
I may have to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we'll coordinate on that. Okay, we're going to coordinate on that. All right. So next up, and this is just, again, you know, the summer is like, all the grants cycles are in the summer. And this is really, this, I was contacted by Brian Stratton, who's the executive director of Canal Corporation, and he said, you know, you guys should take a look at this. This is, you have the brochure in your packet about the New York Forward Initiative. I'm going to be attending a webinar about it. He said, just put in a letter of intent. You may never act on it. You don't know necessarily if you qualify for it. He thinks that we do, potentially. So this would be nothing more than us putting in some type of a letter of intent. So I'm going to attend the webinar and get back to you guys about whether or not we're eligible and the types of things we may be eligible for. Because we need to put in a letter of intent August 10th or 11th. Yeah. And it's before our next meeting. So I, I, again, we're on these tight windows. And this is nothing more than, you know, we don't spend anything, we don't know anything. It's just saying we may want to apply for this. So that's why I wanted to bring it back to the board tonight, just to let you know. It's another grant cycle where we may have another opportunity to take a look at some things. You know, like some of the things could be markers, wayfinding, things, you know, that are relating to, you know, the historic character of our village. That's part of what this grant can fund. How do we know? You know, I'm going to go to the webinar though, and I just want to give you guys a heads up about it. And I'll, I'll give you kind of a readout about, you know, how this looks. But I, I at least wanted to bring it before the board tonight.
Okay. So it doesn't matter that we don't have a plan?
No, no, not at this point. No, exactly. Basically, you know, Brian just said, he goes, just say you're interested in the grant, and these are the kinds of things, these are the kinds of things that we would like to look at. I mean, it's definitely a more generalized letter. In fact, it was similar to the initial letter that we put in for the funding we received for the sidewalks, you know. You know, we received that $100,000 grant from the state, from through Senator Brooks' office. So I just, I just think it may be worth following up on, you know, and I'll attend the webinar and I'll give you guys a readout and see if it's worth us, you know, putting something in the hopper. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not being asked to vote to send, to submit a letter of intent tonight, is that correct?
Well, we could, we could vote on that and make it conditional on whether or not we actually are eligible. Do you know, do you know what I'm saying? In other words, again, the window is tight because they announce it. This was just announced, and it's just announcing for the letter of intent.
I understand that. My, I am concerned. I did pull up the letter of intent, and it looks to me to be a little bit more specific than what we're saying. Specifically, it looks for a description of the focus area, which I have no idea what we're even talking about. The key characteristics, the size, the boundaries, the description of the area.
Are you looking at the DRI or the?
This one is DRI.
No, that's the DRI. Those are for really large municipalities. So we're looking at New York Forward, which is more for villages.
Right, and on the, this is New York Forward, and then underneath that I click on the letter of intent to apply.
I don't know, I had a conversation with somebody about, you know, from the, from the state about it, who administers it, and they said, just put in a general letter of intent. And as I said, I'll find out if we're eligible, and I'll find out what we're eligible for, potentially, and bring it back to the board. It's nothing more than that. If you want me to not do anything, I won't. I just think that there's funds out there, and that if we can at least kind of put something in the hopper, it could be something that's good for our community.
Do we have, do we have to meet again about the workshop meeting? Is there another meeting that we're having regarding that? Before John moves forward? The firm that we met with this evening, John?
I don't have anything else scheduled.
I mean, he showed us the timeline.
He showed us the timeline. It's in the timeline.
Because he's coming. What I was getting at, is we're having a meeting.
Tie it back in. Yeah.
At that time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah, I think he had one, hang on, just one second. Wasn't it the 25th?
25th of July.
Wasn't it?
It's just a submit, submit concept plan to village for to review, for review and comment.
That's a good idea.
I thought it would, I didn't, I'm sorry, it's my misunderstanding. I didn't know he was looking.
I would think that David, I would think that that would be interactive and he would want a meeting because that's something that our board would really have to look at to make sure that's something we want to submit. So why don't I shoot for the 25th? We'll confirm it with him tomorrow, okay? And then I'll, by then, oh, when's the webinar? The webinar might, ooh. The webinar might be the 28th. I'm signed up for so many of these.
It's a Monday, just for the reference.
Oh, it is, okay.
I'll confirm with him and I'll send that to the board and we can set a special meeting or workshop meeting for that.
Okay. You know what I'll do, even, I think the webinar might be past that date, but what I can do then is I'll call the contact for this grant and, you know, get the additional information. So when we do sit down with this other grant, with, you know, Fisher.
Our agenda.
We can take an action at that point, okay? Because we still have a little bit of a window. It's just that we need to put it in before our August meeting. So we're gonna have to have a special meeting then, scheduled. I know, well, we're on deadlines.
Yep.
We're on deadlines. Yes, Justin.
Sure, I appreciate the initiative on this, and I appreciate the efforts to improve the village with grant funding. My concern with the last grant that we, the process to procure a grant writer and a consultant for the workshop meeting that we had today, as well as New York Forward, is that it seems that we're applying for these grants without having a clear enough idea of what we're applying for. And my concern is that that causes this board, as well as members of the public and other village boards, to lose some control over the future of the village as determined by these expenditures. And so I, you know, I would not be in a position to approve a letter of intent this evening. I would like to see that. I appreciate these efforts and I'd like to have a little bit more time.
We're not approving a letter of intent this evening, no. We agreed that, you know, I'll get the information back to the board because it's a grant cycle, and then we can, we can be thinking about it. And what I'll do is I'll break out, based on my conversation with the administrator of the grant, I'll break, first of all, if we're not eligible, we're not gonna pursue it. If we are eligible in certain areas, I know some of the areas are about historic character preservation, you know, there's other, there certainly could be some potential there, but I'll drill down on that and get the information back to us. And if we have the meeting on the 25th with the other consultant, that's a great time because we still have that window to be able to put in a letter of intent and the board can take action then.
Okay.
You know.
Now, the meeting on the 25th, do, how does the board feel about making point of including other board members? HPB and PCBA at that meeting as well. I mean, here's an opportunity that we're, you know, we're commenting on when and allow. Give them an extra special invitation to also contribute.
Sure, and what we can do, whatever they start to send to us that's conceptual, we can certainly forward to other boards to comment. You know, that might, because, you know, again, everybody's kind of away in those vacations, so at least, you know, they can even give us feedback, just even.
Right away. So as long as they sort of know that we're meeting on the 25th and their.
Sure.
Is there a conflict that night with HPB? I don't think there is.
I don't believe so.
But they just met last night, so.
Yeah, they just met.
Yeah.
But you think they're Monday nights, so.
They won't meet again because of.
Okay, great.
There's a special meeting on the 28th.
What day?
28th.
28th. They're having a meeting on the 28th?
Special meeting.
Okay, special meeting.
So you're family and all that.
Okay, okay. But the 25th is open?
25th is open.
Okay, so that's, that's good to know, but we'll straighten it out tomorrow also this Monday. Okay, so, member items.
Do you reserve?
Oh, I skipped over reserves. How could I have done that? When there's $400,000 sitting around. Right, reserves. Let's talk about those. Because what we're gonna need to do, I'm thinking based on everything scheduled, a workshop to kind of sort things out, really. I mean, I think that would be the action tonight for all of us.
Yeah, I think there are two funds that you have to focus on, maybe three. With the, you know, the other one, there's a little question on it, is the Wood Creek. Whether that's a repair or whether it's a capital.
Yeah.
Which will depend on Zach's answer, whether pumps are capital group and or a repair of the station. Sorry, what was the question? And I don't think you need to answer it right now.
You're not gonna have to answer it.
Pumps.
It's just, it's, yeah, pumps. We're gonna have to sort it out, and you probably have some thoughts on it.
But the two other big funds are clearly not, we cannot prove how they were set up, where they came from. It looks like they exist because we think they exist.
We have the money.
We have the money, but the easiest solution is for the board to decide what they want to be used for. And then to repurpose them, we'll create them that way. And that will tell us how we create them and how we use them. But I don't, I really don't think they ought to be touched until you do that.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, we're really, we need to, at the workshop, you know, to really kind of sort this out because based on, you know, the discussion we got that I had with you, is that we clearly know there was an intent there to do something with this money. We know that, the money's there. So it's really gonna be up to us to sort through that and say, how do we going forward identify how those funds really should be used and create the appropriate language so as needed, we'll be able to access those funds? So workshop in September? We're gonna have a whole bunch of workshops, you guys.
Can I suggest October?
I know, well, that's, either way, I mean, you know, I mean, we need to do, we need to sit down and sort through it, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's fine to have a workshop, workshop session as far as I'm concerned. I did just want to briefly respond in case there's anything that we can start to move forward with the funds. Jeff, thank you very much for your work on this and Dorothy as well. I assume you're involved in helping out. It seems like the largest, I've also got a spreadsheet that I put together that I believe I distributed to the board a while ago, and it asks a couple of additional inotes, some of which overlap with ones that were provided to us by the attorney. It seems like one of the largest funds is the, let's see, G232VR, right? That's almost $250,000 currently. And it seems like, as you mentioned, Jeff, it seems like that originally started when the village had their own water facilities, and perhaps it was not changed properly to reflect new uses. I did want to mention that in the large reserve packet, there's an email from former trustee Galley on March 7th, 2014, where he said the fund is intended for purchase of a flush truck. And so I believe that, I just wanted to comment that it seems like there is that history there and the $250,000 amount. Zach, maybe you can comment. I mean, that's about what a flush truck costs, or maybe even more now?
2013 was about the time that we did need to do these flush trucks.
And what Tim Gallin wrote, was there any documentation that was, I'm trying to remember that.
That's a problem, I don't have documentation.
Yeah, you don't have the documentation. I'm trying to remember that, but I don't.
No, I just, I don't, I'm not saying that it was perfectly adjusted based on those needs. I'm just saying that there was an historical trial where it seems like the trustees intended that to be used for that purpose. And I think that it would be great to preserve that continuity and make the adjustments to that fund so that we could use it for a flush truck as needs in the future. Just one thought on that one. And I think that, let's see, some of the other changes that you mentioned also make sense. I guess I wasn't clear.
I didn't make any, any suggestions, changes.
As, I'm sorry, as far as the funds that you identified that need clarification, I think that does make sense. I was not clear from the email about the interest on the funds and how those were generating interest that was different from what we expected. And I wondered if there are any other reports or clarifications I could.
I spoke to our accountant because the breakdown is something that was recorded on the, it's in the accounting program. It's everything, all the journal entries that were made by the previous treasurer. I follow the concept, but it didn't make sense to me when you're dealing with a reserve because to me, the largest amount in the reserve fund should get the largest portion of the interest.
Right.
And the breakdown did not make sense. I talked to Jeff and I talked to the accountant. Accountant said it didn't make sense to him because he had seen the labeling. He didn't know how those numbers came about. He said, should do appropriately as I said. He goes.
To prorate it back?
You're empowered to make that adjustment to, the largest one gets the largest portion of interest, and then everything so follows. And that's how I broke it down with the last interest.
More specifically, I think he said to do it proportionally.
Yes, that's exactly what I.
Proportionally, that's what he said.
Yes, so the largest fund received the largest portion of the interest. I can't go back and break any of those, but that, I can't tell you how that came about and why it was done that way. There's no no.
So maybe I just have a very basic misunderstanding where the interest comes from. So this is.
It's in the same, same account.
Okay, so they're all in one savings account.
You got it.
And when we adjust the paper reference, basically, we're just allocating it in a way that's not.
Into each fund, so each fund shows their appropriate amount.
Right, right, okay.
So what you're doing now going forward is, it's essentially based on your conversation with the accountant and everybody. It's a correction going forward where you're proportionally allocating.
The one with $70,000 gets 10% of the interest, that's what it's getting.
Okay.
I do the math accordingly when it comes.
Thank you. Yes, I just had a very basic misunderstanding on that.
Yeah, you know, because I spared it and I went, okay, and I followed suit, and then I'm like, this doesn't make sense to me. And then I was talking to Jeff and we talked to the, I talked to the accountant and made the appropriate arrangements.
Dorothy, is there, is there only one account for all of this money?
There's one account right now that's holding, say, three or four of the reserves for sewer. Actually, yes. That's correct.
So the general fund has one account?
General funds, it's, yes.
I'm not talking about specific bank.
Yeah, it has its own bank account. They have their own bank account. The new sewer fund that we just established has its own bank account. There'll never be a consideration with the interest. It's just straight bad interest. And I think that's a little cleaner.
It's cleaner.
But when you, but again, when you're not earning much money on interest, you do want to combine all your reserves to get the most bang for your buck.
Oh, yeah, like point three.
But given the amount of the one, I, I'm working through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the one account, they share the interest.
Okay, I mean, do you feel like it's clearer now? Because it's so confusing how it kind of happened.
Yeah, that's, and I guess my only other thing, going into the workshop, it seems like we need to gather some notes about expected cost for repairs, especially related to things like siphons below the canals, right? That's, that's a big part of the equation about what we actually want to, want to save.
Well, we have.
That's what we did.
We did.
Very good then.
We have the $300,000 fund for catastrophic repairs, which we covered this Sunday.
We got, yes.
Which will cover the cost of one.
Yeah, the siphon.
One siphon, right.
Yeah, okay. Not bad, because if more than one goes, we're probably heading for state aid and FEMA, okay? I mean, let's be realistic here, you know. Would that be already asked and answered, have the discussion, have that set up? Yeah, okay. So we're gonna set up, yes.
Okay, it was a message from Renee. She had to sign off.
Oh, bye Renee, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, definitely need the workshop, definitely need to kind of pull some things together, all of us.
I guess the thing we could do with looking at all the funds and would be smart, so we need assessment for buildings, equipment.
Exactly. We can start putting things together, and Zach, you can help us with that. You know, and we do need to take a fresh look because pricing, you know, everything's changing. So, but all good points, for sure. Okay, let's see, where are we now?
Minutes.
Minutes. Oh, the minutes. Oh, boy. Lot, lot of minutes.
It's a.
You don't need me for military.
No.
I mean, I love the state.
And now you don't, come on, come on now. But thank you very much.
Right.
Very helpful. All right, I just. Okay, so the first up is April 26th.
Is Renee still here?
No.
Here's why.
Yeah.
Everyone's here.
Okay, so let's, we're gonna have to table that one. You're right.
There's another one as well where I was not present.
That's right. Okay, so there's gonna be two sets of minutes because we have a quorum of three. Renee is not here, so, I knew. You were so close.
May I suggest, I believe that we had one public comment that was a general one.
Thank you. Why don't we do, should we do public comment? Yeah. Is our, is our friend still online?
Yes, he is. Okay, you have to eat a rose this morning.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you for waiting. We appreciate that.
Okay.
Hey, thanks, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can perfectly. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, again, it's Dave McGeal, 28, Washington Ave. And so I have a request. So these meetings are great, you know, it's very informative. I learn a lot. I even listened to the recording of your special meeting last week. I actually learned something about the failing part of the sidewalk along the canal there. But there's a lot of action going on in the village. I mean, in these, and there's things that I'd love to know the latest and greatest on all of them, but I can't attend all the meetings. And I think that's, that's pretty accurate for all the residents. So what I'm requesting is that we spin back up, or spin up new, a regular recurring e-newsletter. I mean, when I, when I walk the village, there's a lot of things, for example, I mentioned along the canal, the two-by-fours in the Home Depot buckets as a fence, right? And I know there's a story behind that. The crosswalks that were started last year that are still sitting unfinished, the curbs that are not finished, which, which have really become a safety issue. I walk this village all the time with my wife, and I couldn't imagine some old-timer with his cane or walker or a mom in a stroller going over some of those curbs. Now, I know Zach's crew, they, I know they do an awesome job. So my mind says, well, something must be hamstringing them from, from doing the work, or it's not their responsibility. Without knowing and without attending all the meetings to get all the information, one can only assume, geez, maybe nothing's happening, or, or the board, or the mayor, you know, isn't doing what they're supposed to do. But I'm sure I'm wrong. And there's a story where the mayor's hammer in the state saying, get out here and finish these jobs. So then I go to the website, right? Website's under renovation. I don't like that the village is under renovation, but the website seems to have been under renovation for quite some time now. I'd love an update on the website and what's going on with that. When I look at the e-newsletter, our last one was March of '21. I know I'm signed up to receive them because I received a bulletin back in January, and I've even clicked it a couple of times to. I've even clicked it a couple of times to, you know, make sure that my email's there if there is an e-newsletter. I know we're not the size and you don't have the resources of the town of Pittsburgh, but the town puts out a very substantial, well-done e-newsletter every week. I'm not suggesting we need one every week, but we have a lot going on where it'd be great to get, if it's a monthly, that says, "Here's everything that's going on." And for example, yeah, those crosswalks haven't been completed, residents, we understand. But here's everything I'm doing as the mayor and the board, I'm hammering this, you know, share with us so we know all of the efforts that I know you're putting in, because I see the way you run these meetings, that they're very well-done. So I know there's stuff behind the scenes going on. 75 Monroe, I mean, I've been saying that that deserves its own link right on the website. It's such a long, drawn-out thing. I've even attended the last couple of zoning board meetings to learn what's up with that. By the way, I know the boards are independent, but you got to get those folks in line. I think they're letting some real personal opinions get in the way of letting that project finally get going. But so anyway, in closing, that's what I request. If I'm off and there's been a newsletter going out all this time, please correct me. Otherwise, please, I think it would be very helpful for everyone to let us know latest and greatest of all the stuff going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And actually, I think, you know, I'm certainly in agreement with what you're saying. We're trying to do a lot of things at once. We have been actually short-staffed and have had significant transitions in our office and also with DTW. So I'm not using it as an excuse, I'm just saying, we are tiny, you know, you're right, the town puts out a great newsletter and they have a communications department that's full-time. So, you know, I get where you're going. Do you go on our Facebook page? Because so many of the things you mentioned have been posted on Facebook with updates about, you know, where we're going. We're getting ready to do another update. Because Zach, aren't they getting ready to pour the concrete on the bridge?
Yes.
This week, maybe even tomorrow, I don't know. They're pretty close. So we've been kind of waiting a little bit in terms of getting, knowing where the, I'm using the bridge as an example, and I'll get to the sidewalks in a minute, where we literally, pun intended, see, you know, some concrete results. Because once they pour the concrete, we know that they're heading to the finish line. And so that's something we do want to communicate to our residents, because it looks like they may be finishing a bit ahead of schedule. I do want to speak about the sidewalks. This is an $8.4 million project that NICE DOT is doing, the Department of Transportation. We don't have any control over that. So what you're looking at is how NICE DOT implements the project throughout our village. So they did start last year in the fall where they did, you know, those bump outs. There was a shortage of concrete, and that also was put out in a post as well. There was a shortage of concrete, they couldn't finish the job, they ended up temporarily putting in asphalt. They're coming back, probably, I would say, August, September, to finish the port on everything, because now they have the concrete and they also have the labor. Can we do better about communication? Absolutely, 100%, and I'm in agreement with you, and I'm going to try to do better. Again, we're working on it, you know, we don't have a lot of people.
No, I appreciate that.
I really appreciate your comments. I, you know, I appreciate the fact that you attend the meetings or listen to the meetings and that you care and that you're engaged as a villager. I think that's wonderful. And come in and say hello to me.
Oh, yeah, well, definitely. Can I just make one recommendation on that Facebook piece? So I'm not really a Facebook guy. I know a lot of people are. Could we put a link to it on the website? Because right now, the website, it's basically, hey, if you want to be, if you want to receive bulletins in e-newsletters, click this button. If we're not going to do those, then let's have the Facebook link. And the other thing, I would say, Ms. Mayor, I totally get, yeah, you don't have the resources for what the town does, but it doesn't even have to be, you know, if you did an e-newsletter, it could be very.
Totally agree.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll leave it at that. But thank you for listening.
Sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, our village clerk, she helps with the posts, and you put links back to the website.
We, yes, we do do links back to the website, and on the website, it's very tiny and it's just the way the website is designed, there's a little Facebook F on there to go to Facebook to see things. We do try to mimic the Facebook post along with the news bulletin post, so that they do hit both sites. But again, we do the best we can, so we don't always touch everything and might not always catch something that's going on if it happens right away. So we do the best.
But thank you, really. I mean it. And again, come in and say hello, okay?
Yeah, I will, thank you.
All right, you have a great evening.
You too, thanks.
Okay. Any member items?
I did have a couple of brief member items.
Oh, minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, we're back. Well, no, wait, we have two sets that we cannot approve tonight.
Okay.
Because Justin wasn't at one meeting and Lily was not at another. You're right. So we're pulling the April 20.
It's these two.
Okay, April 26, you cannot approve.
Yeah, we're not going to approve that, so we're going to.
April 28, you can approve.
Right, okay. Those are the two?
They're right here.
Oh, wait, wait, let's keep going.
I think there's one more, because I was not present.
I know.
The most recent. It was recently.
May 12, we can approve.
May 12?
Yes, I have the mayor, I have.
Everybody, everybody, okay. Okay, so we'll look at the May 12 minutes. Are there any questions about these minutes or any amendments?
I already spinned my amendments for everything.
Okay, yeah, I think everybody's, and you're, so we're good. Okay, Dorothea has all that. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 12 minutes as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye. Boy, this is quick. Okay, next set. Let's see where we are. Yeah, I think everybody got their amendments and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May 26, you can approve.
We can do that, okay. Any additional amendments other than what has been done? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 26 minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call. Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye. Okay, so that's the 20, so now we're June 9?
Uh, no, we have May.
Oh, no, we can't do that one.
You can do May 3.
Can we do that? Oh, May 3, first, you're right, I'm sorry, I skipped. Where am I? Where am I? Any amendments?
Any that we received.
Wait, what date are we on?
May 31st.
Where am I looking? Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong one. I apologize. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now, let's see, next up.
June 9?
June 9, you can do.
We can do that one, yeah.
Okay, June 9, it's the special meeting, that's the first, the emergency meeting?
Yeah, the proceedings.
There's two for June.
Yeah, we have two June 9s, that's right.
Like you'll have two for some.
Okay, were there any amendments? I think, no.
I don't think there's any.
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the proceedings of the special meeting on June 9.
Second.
Roll call.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
Second set of minutes from.
Yeah, so that's, oh. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9.
Okay, so.
Wait, wait a minute, I just called up the same one again. Hang on, something's not right.
I'm missing the, I'm missing that, so I go for the special meeting.
I'm seeing special meeting twice.
Yeah, they're both became special.
They were?
Yes, because we moved the meeting.
Oh, my gosh, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
They actually became two specials.
Okay, so the motion will be to approve the second special meeting minutes. That's right, you're right.
Because it no longer was a regular, it was a watch. Yeah, it was just so we could do the middle and contrary.
You're right, you're right, I do remember that.
Oh, I love when I'm right.
I know. It feels good, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Justine Lethier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, go to June 14.
I don't think we need.
Nope, we can't do that one. Okay, so that'll be for our next meeting then.
Okay.
But I'm off.
But wait, there's more.
Enter.
No, I think we did them all, didn't we?
I think we're caught up to.
Wow.
Yeah, I now have four sets to do. That's how quickly we can call behind.
Oh, my gosh, it's just crazy.
Crazy.
Okay, so now we did our minutes, okay, we're through our agenda. Member items, and you had a couple.
Yeah, sure, just a couple of ways that we could potentially use some village resources in pursuing grants. I wanted to call the board's attention to a grant possibility that Jackie Edner, the resident and town environmental board member, brought to my attention, and that's related to an electric vehicle charging station.
Yep.
That we could potentially put on village hall property and village hall parking lot or something like that. I think the match is up to 20% based on income. I can forward that to the board after the.
Yeah, I actually, I have a copy of that as well. In fact, I may have forwarded it to you.
Correct, I think we already signed up.
Yeah, and Steve, yeah, and so, yeah, we're signed up for the webinar and that.
Great.
And what's great about that, Steve, when we get the grant for the climate smart, we can put that as part of the grant that we require, see, so this is, and then if we do that, then we go to the next level.
Is there also, I would have to look into this more, but possibilities of using ARPA funding for the matching portion, or for the up to 20%?
I got to look, I really got to look. They keep, they've been changing it, but it's.
Initially, it was no.
Yeah.
Initially, it was no, that you could not use it to, for any other grants, that it was a direct grant.
And I want to talk to the accountant.
But it may have changed.
It may have changed. But there's also the cut so where we could declare some of this lost income to a certain dollar amount. So there might be a portion we can declare as lost income and it can go right general.
To the general fund and we can.
Whatever project.
Yeah, okay.
But I want to make that, I don't want to say you can do it and then I go, no, so.
And there's been some more recent revisions, I think, on how you can use it.
Yeah, no.
Because there was a lot of pushback from a lot of municipalities, it's pretty destructive.
The only other item that I wanted to mention is, it seems like some of the audiovisual issues keep coming up with some remote attendees, especially when people aren't close to the microphone, so I wonder if we can keep that on the table for possible allocation of ARPA funds or other.
Oh, you're speaking her language, I know.
In the same.
I think so too.
More meetings, yes, please.
And also, just even acoustically, and we talked about this before, even if we were to get a rug, you know, some stuff to absorb sound in addition to upgrading to some better equipment.
And we got some different chair bottoms.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
That they won't be.
They silence the chairs.
Falling off, will be actually silencing the chairs when they, all that scraping noise we get on the floor, we're looking at it as.
Because when I'm shuffling papers, it picks up. I noticed that last night in the HPP meeting, yeah.
Do you want them to be permanent? Things on the chairs, do you want them to be permanent?
Uh.
There's a reason I'm asking.
The ones I got are plastic, they're like asleep.
Yes, I have the little rubbery ones.
Yeah, the little caps.
Yeah, they, they'll stay better than the little, that we've been using, they just fall right off.
Yeah.
So these will, we'll try these and see if that works.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't want to change the chairs anyway, because.
Yeah.
They're all part of the room, keeping it to store, so I want to just protect them as best I can.
All good, absolutely. Anything else for you? Okay, thank you, thank you. Lily, you have a member item?
I do not.
Okay.
Can I give, is that authorization for me to talk some people about the audiovisual and get some more quotes for that upcoming?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
We've already gotten some quote.
We got a little cast, I'm like, to get current ones and get some new ideas.
Yeah, we need to be current with what's out there.
Is there any specific, what, are we looking to spend less or just find a revised quote?
I'd say get a revised quote, spend, if we can spend less, I'm always good with that, because we were looking at the, at a time where it was really hot and heavy, but, you know.
Sure.
I think along the same lines as what we were looking for with equipment, it should be something simple, easy, and addressing the sound.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because as I said, if we don't address it, as though we've been doing this, it's not really benefit to the public.
Yeah, anything that improves it.
Do we need a motion or anything to do that?
No, the board's okay, I go do that, I don't, you know, I don't have to.
Just gathering information.
Cross concerns before, I just want to make sure the board is, I'm good with me, you know, so.
I think we're all totally for it. Great, okay. I don't have any member items, so, yes.
Sorry, someone just occurred to me that I was thinking of earlier today. The, there's a parking lot just before you turn down Village Lane, going to our shop. That parking lot, very end of it, is a collection basin for stormwater runoff. There is an inlet coming in from that parking lot and other spalled properties entering into that, and then also the swampy area back into the wooded area.
When you're heading back.
Runs into that, and then it exits that into the Pickle Factory parking lot, and then shoots west to where the ponds are behind the ministore.
Oh, the old ward, huh?
Are you with me?
Yeah.
I think so. It's on the right as you're driving into Village Land?
Yes. So that's notorious and always problematic for backing up because of the collection of sticks into the outlet pipe.
Oh, just debris coming through.
So we have, just started the last couple days, we've heard a backhoe from school to kind of start to clear it out, but at this point, we've lost sight of the corrugated metal pipe at the exit. Can't tell if it's buried or discediment, or if it's officially rotted away, but we may have to do a little more work than what was planned in there. And because this kind of came up as an issue with me reaching out to Scott Harder in the past.
Right.
And asking for his recommendations or just, you know, consideration of this.
Is Scott taking a look at it?
Not yet, because I want to reach out to him until I have board approval.
Yeah, we need to look at that, especially if it's rotted out.
And I don't know how much of the system leaving it is actually village-owned.
Scott should be able to help with that.
Yeah.
Because he's been looking at them.
He's designing the drainage, going through the parking lot there.
That's right, and you get it also on the other side of the storage property, yeah.
So, just for your blessing to regen that.